Good evening to everyone. Welcome to our meeting. We'll call to order, and our first on the agenda is to review and approve the agenda. Everyone would look at that for a few minutes and see if there are any changes. And if there are no changes, there is a motion from Mr. Jean.
Mr. Goodman.
Mr. Goodman. Can you pull your microphone just a little closer, Jean, or else we need a little bit louder?
I will do it.
Second, thank you, Allison. All those in favor signify by raising your hands, and so it's unanimous with everyone that's here. Second, we're going to approve the minutes from June 22, 2015, which are attached to the agenda. And if everyone would, if you haven't had a chance to look at them right, you can look at them right now in just overview. Motion to approve. Is there a second to, thank you, all those in favor signify by raising your hands, please. It's unanimous with the group. Moving on to the next item, which is comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Good evening. This afternoon at 3:42 PM.
Would you identify yourself, please?
Ma'am, you cannot ask me to identify myself underneath the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act. All right, you can't ask it, Hazel.
Oh, all right.
All right, it's against the law. You cannot require somebody to identify themselves to speak. And now I'll start my two minutes because you just interrupted me.
Go ahead, Mr. Nowacki.
Yes.
Thank you. At 3:42 PM this afternoon, I filed a seven-page Freedom of Information complaint, naming each member of the Board of Education for violating provisions in the Connecticut General Statute 1-225, which requires this board to have properly recorded minutes on subject matters coming out of executive session that involve such things as contracts and other matters. And this process has been going on for years in this board. Tonight, I'm asking for the resignation of Hazel Hobbs for having orchestrated a well-planned set of minutes and agendas for this that did not reflect the requirement underneath the Connecticut General Statutes to properly record minutes. I did so, not as a matter of preference, but as a matter of that Ms. Hobbs was also found to have conducted a private cocktail party at her son's home, inviting a majority and a caucus level, a majority of the members of the Board gathered at a social gathering to introduce certain candidates and speak about public matters. And that, by the way, violates the Freedom of Information Act. That's included in the complaint. This conduct to fix elections in this town are going to stop Ms. Hobbs. And I seek your resignation when you get a chance to review that seven-page letter and the documents attached thereto. Have a good evening.
I would like to reply to those accusations at this time. I did not have a party, did not give a party, and it was given by my son and daughter-in-law. There was no quorum there of any group. There were three representatives from three completely different legislative groups, and that's all that attended. The rest were all guests of my son and daughter-in-law. I am not going to resign. Are there any other people who would like to speak? There being no other people to speak, we'll move on to the reports in recognition and Mr. Cass and the enrollment report.
Thank you, Mrs. Hobbs. So today, I put on your places an update on the elementary enrollment numbers, because those are the numbers that have traditionally, we have kept an eye on in terms of enrollment. And you can take a look at those, but my report tonight will be brief in that our numbers have remained relatively flat over, since my last report. We're projecting, or have currently, 293 kindergarteners, and that's traditionally the level that we're looking at in terms of the numbers. They have grown slightly since my last report, and we're continuing to monitor them. We also are looking at some of the other grade levels as well, looking at grade, at grade three, but particularly kindergarten at East and South. For now, we're satisfied with the numbers as they are, but as has been the case in the past, these next two to three weeks, we'll be monitoring the numbers as we normally do. I'll be meeting with, Jill and I will be meeting with the elementary principals later this week, just to kind of get our, get a handle on those. And then, and we will continue to meet regularly to determine where our enrollment numbers are.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about the enrollment numbers?
Well, because enrollment has been an important conversation that we've been having for a while, just to share. As you know, we had NASDAQ and PRAUDA do our projections this year. The 293 so far in kindergarten is above the PRAUDA projection of 271 for kindergarten coming in, and below the NASDAQ prediction, which was 304. So the, you know, as we look, why we have two demographers take a look at it, but the, they're running, the numbers overall are running as we had expected, given the enrollment projections.
Yes, Deanna.
Could you give us some sort of indication about sort of what happens in August here? Because I mean, we're obviously, you know, bumping up on our numbers and, you know, historically, have we had a number of additions in August, or is sort of, by July, we sort of have a fairly decent rate?
No, actually, this is why we continue to monitor these numbers all the way through well into August. You know, in the past, we have added sections, primarily at kindergarten over these last three years, one section, two sections, sometimes even a third section in another grade. And to date this year, we have not added any sections. So that's the reason why I think that over these next two to three weeks, when people move in, when that will be able to solidify our numbers. We are ready and able to add sections should we see the need. Our principals have candidates lined up, so we'll be able, once we see the numbers materialize where we think we're going to be needing a section, we're going to be able to act quickly.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that, because I, just as I'm looking at this again with the kindergarten, because kindergarten's always the time we want to have the better ratio. You don't want to go with that 20 max, so it is a little concerning. So I'm glad you've got your eye on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or questions or ideas? Okay. We will then move on to the next topic.
On the enrollment, I'm just curious, we've, going, the class going from third grade to fourth grade next year. I guess it was, it bumped up to, from four sections to sections at West School?
No, actually, that is an error. There, it should read, the 84 should be four sections, and the average class size should be 21. So you picked up on the error that we just spotted as we were, as we were talking.
Oh, okay, so that's four sections.
It should be four.
And it's going to be 21 students at West, and so you're actually at 26 overall, and with pre-K, you're at?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. So the 41 is not a?
That's pre-K students.
Pre-K students, okay. Okay.
Sure, and that's, that's an important point, just again, because we've been discussing it a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
The number of sections at the elementary school really drives so much as we look at the scheduling, look at the use of resources. And even when people ask, what is, what's the capacity at the elementary level, it's really more about the number of sections than it is the number of kids, because that's sort of how that's scheduled, how things run in a self-contained environment. So if you look at the, you know, the 15, 16 number for the number of sections, as you, as you know, 29 is sort of that sweet spot with the number of sections at our elementary schools. So currently, we're at 28 at East, 27 at South, and then we're at 26 at West, but if you add the three preschool on, we're at 29. So that's, we use that in our review as we look at this as well, as far as the number of sections go. And of course, the class-side guidelines are down below that show that in fourth grade, it goes from 20, it jumps from 16 to 20, to 20 to 24, which is why that's four sections there.
Any other questions? I'll have to see if there are any other errors we find, if we didn't know there was a test. Now, moving on to the next item, which is an action item on our district goals. Would you like to, Dr. Lotzi, frame those for us?
I would love to. So we're asking, presenting tonight for a first read, the 2015, 2016 district goals, which are the, again, the guiding goals, and sort of helps shape the vision for our district as we go into, and we get prepared to begin our 15, 16 school year. The goals throughout the year have been a, an active living document for us, both as a cabinet and as an ad council with the principals and the assistant principals. The, we've used this in our discussions and our decision-making. We've been, sort of since really early spring, reflecting on our progress around these goals. And as you know, even earlier than that, we use it to develop our budget assumptions when we think about developing and putting together the next year's budget and presenting that. So these goals have been guideposts that we've used throughout the year in order to help us, really as a reflective tool, are we on the right path? Are we putting our resources, our energy, our time in the right ways? As measuring sticks, you know, have we touched base on these important things? I've actually, we've used it to guide our board look-ahead, to be sure that our presentations to the board were illustrative of some of the work that we're doing in relation to these goals. And then, so the process of revision really began early spring, as we started those reflections, you know, on those. As we approached the summer, we devoted significant time with our administrative team to have them reflect as far as their buildings go and share that out as a whole group, and sort of get their input around what's working, what's not, what's the next step. If it's an iterative goal, sort of what's the next step in outcome on this work? If it was something that was concluding, you know, is that what's the next step around there? And then, was there any language in there that maybe wasn't observable or measurable, or was it not necessarily helpful, or could be made more helpful, that we can go through and revise and edit? So we've really spent quite a bit of time working through that as a, as a group, as a whole ad council and district leadership team. And I know that the principals and others did the same in their building. So it was, it's sort of, there's always a process of information flow from the top down and the down-up and back and forth, so that, you know, the whole organization, the whole district can work together towards these goals. So tonight, as we, you have in front of you two different documents. One is the, is the goal, the set of goals from last year, so the 14, 15 goals. The next is this first read, the proposed goals. And I had sent around, I don't know if it was helpful or not, so that track changes document. And I have a couple of extras here if, if that would be helpful. I'll send one down. As you, as you know, we don't necessarily, we have five large, five goals, five overarching goals that remain relatively constant. We look at the objectives underneath those goals as we look, how do we operationalize this? How, what does it look like? What direction are we going in? And I know you have, I'm sure you have lots of examples you can share through the years of things, such as full-day kindergarten and FLESS and other things that sort of, that iterative process through the years with the goals. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Corenti, and I thought, however the board prefers to do this, we could discuss one goal at a time, if that works, and sort of stop and reflect and share feedback on that. Or we could run through the whole thing and do feedback after whatever's better for the board as, as we work through this. Again, it's a first read. We will have our second read at our meeting in August, and certainly we'll be discussing it between now and then as well.
How many people would like to do it a goal at a time? And then we'll ask you, how many would like to do it all at once, or just where you want to speak? A goal at a time?
I'd like that, yeah.
Okay, all right. We'll go that way.
Do you want a motion first?
That sounds fine.
Yeah, go ahead. I will make the motion to approve for first read, the 15, 16 NCPS district goals.
Thank you. In a second. Thank you. Penny?
All those in favor? No, we don't vote.
Oh, we don't have to vote. First read. Excuse me. Oh, that was just to look at.
Just to get the discussion going.
Let it go. Okay. Did you want to say something, Dr. Corenti?
Sure, I can start us off with goal number one. So goal number one is to increase student learning as measured by multiple and varied assessments to assure all students graduate prepared for a dynamic and complex global society. And certainly, objective number one is really looking at our ongoing work with curriculum, instruction, and assessments, making sure that we reflect local, state, national, international standards and expectations. I think probably the one area that, you know, we've been focusing on all of this, one of the areas that we really are taking a very close look at as we're moving into our curriculum writing during the summer is really that higher-order thinking and the assessments that we're posing children with, which also relates into our curriculum writing. So it's taking a look at the depth of knowledge and really saying, you know, it's kind of the depth of knowledge has taken over kind of that Bloom's taxonomy, but it's really taking a look at, you know, those Level One, which is that recall and reproduction. Your Level Two, which is kind of the skills and concepts. Level Three, that strategic thinking and reasoning. And Level Four, that extended thinking. So it's really taking a look at our curriculum, at our assessments, and saying, you know, where are we within those four levels, and what are we asking kids to do on a day-to-day basis, and what are we asking kids to do when we're asking them to do some type of performance-based assessment? And that's really been a look K-12, and that we've been spending time throughout the course of the year, but certainly as we're moving into the summer work and taking a closer look at some of our common assessments that we have. You know, certainly, it's also, you know, preparing our students as we're moving into all these next-generation assessments, whether it be smarter balanced or the new version of the SAT, which will be coming out in 2015. It is really preparing our kids for these, these next-generation assessments. So happy to respond to objective one, or I can keep moving on. If there's questions.
Just a question. You mentioned about the SATs, and they're going to be revised. Are they going to be aligned with the SPAQ? Is that what the?
They'll be aligned with Common Core standards.
Yeah.
So they're not a test of Common Core standards, because there's too many standards to be tested within the three-hour period that kids are assessed, but they will be aligned to Common Core standards.
Thank you. I've been reading about that. Yes, Penny?
So we're going to comment on all the items under goal one now?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess I'm?
Goal one, objective one.
Or goal one, objective one, and I can keep moving along to the different objectives, however is easier?
Just keep going then. No, let's keep going.
Actually, I had a question on just under that one. And you guys did a great job of tightening up the language and updating. It's wonderful. I just had a question. I know you had deleted C from the 14, 15 under one, 1, 1, C. And I was just wondering what the rationale was for that.
Sure. We, we found it redundant, actually, because we saw that the D below it, which was as part of ongoing instruction, ensure students are prepared to confidently successfully participate. And this was to create the opportunities to provide them with experiences, to give them the skills required to do those assessments. So when we looked at those two together, you know, it was this, the, part of the progression was around embedding it in practice. So it was really, we felt like the, a number of opportunities was right where we want to be. And now it's just to continually improve how we embed that into the practice.
Okay.
And I think what we were really looking at is those next-generation assessments are going to be online, are going to be adaptive. And so that's where we were seeing some of that repetition.
Okay.
Thank you. As we moved into objective number two, we are continuing to monitor the high school graduation standards to assure that we're in alignment with the state requirements. They have moved it off another year in shifting and adding some of the new requirements. So it's, it's that ongoing, making sure that we're aligned and ready to move forward. We want to be able to continue our pathways for the advanced studies. I think we've made some growth this year, but it's something that we are continuing to closely monitor and track. And we're looking forward to hearing some of Mr. Egan's ideas as he move in, moved in from a new district as our new principal. Obviously, we're continuing to look at the impact of the scheduling. We've made some adjustments with the health curriculum in the fall and how we're, we're scheduling that to open up opportunities for kids to be able to take more electives. But certainly, it's something that's an ongoing study and ongoing research that we continue to do. And then certainly, it's, it is going to be, we're going to need to talk about how we're going to continue to meet all the needs of the internship program. So we don't want to stop the internship program, but the numbers continue to grow each year, and we really only have one person who is managing all of that. So it does become, do we need to increase in a stipend position or something else to just make sure that we are never turning students away from wanting to participate in such a wonderful opportunity?
Terrific. Deanna?
I just had a question on the, on the language change in this section, because we eliminated in numerous item numbers, the report on. And so I just wanted to make sure that sort of ongoing, sort of what the mechanism for reporting back to the board on, you know, a lot of these items that we're obviously very interested in will be.
Right. So as we, as we work through the goals, what we'll then do, as I mentioned before, the, briefly, we'll be looking at the board look-ahead, and actually, we'll be slotting in those reports as, you know, presentations, discussions, workshops, different times. And we can go through and actually map all of that out. So because you think that, you know, all of it really should be reported upon. So I think you could start each one with, you know, and share progress and share progress. And that's, that is our role. We will, we will make it a point to do that. And actually, going through the last year's goals, when we looked through the board look-ahead, with very little exception, we had touched base on most of them. But what we didn't do is make it very explicit. So what we will look to do next year is actually, on the agenda itself, for each of the reports that are directly tied to a goal or objective, we'll actually write the objective one, or goal one, objective one, C, you know, and then we can really tie it back and tighten that piece up so that we, you know, we know why we're doing the reports that we're doing and how that works.
Sounds like a good way for us to keep up and really appreciate what you're doing to integrate all of this.
I think so, yeah. Because there's so much going on all the time. It helps us to, and to keep our focus, you know, on the, on the goals that we put together. Thank you.
Yes, Penny?
So I did have a question. I should probably go to this, but what are, I was just wondering what our graduation standards were with respect to foreign language.
Yeah, it's, it's just the two-year requirement for the?
Two-year requirement?
Is it two-year requirement? I'm just trying to remember.
Well, right now, the state does not have a requirement for, for world language.
Right.
We don't have a requirement for world language. But the vast majority, over 95, 97% of our students do take two or more years. But it's not, it's not a requirement for graduation.
So I guess the only question I would have, and it might relate more to goals or anything, is whether or not, you know, maybe we don't want to be overly formalistic, but we have all the students coming through now, starting to come through, that had a lot of FLESS, going through the middle school, to be arriving at the high school, hopefully with, you know, much greater fluency. I don't know if that's something where we should open up that conversation.
Yeah.
You know, and, and try and figure out, is there something we'd want to require or not require? You know, not, doesn't, doesn't mean we're not offering opportunities for students at the high school. I'm just wondering, with that investment in foreign language, what we might want to do on?
And we did continue to keep objective six, which directly deals with foreign language. And I think one of the areas that we did analyze, that we really wanted to add in, was analyze and report on the percentage of students graduating proficient in a second language as measured by the indicators below. So we feel like we've, we've had this objective here for a while, but I think it's at a point where we really need to start measuring exit criteria. So even if they only do the two years, we should be analyzing now, are they bilingual? Are they able to be proficient in two languages? The children who were part of the first FLESS program as kindergartners are now entering into sixth grade.
So neat.
So that's the year that they started with FLESS. So we continue to kind of track that cohort of children. We have about 77 of them that will continue in sixth grade with Spanish, and then the rest of them have branched out into other languages that they'll be taking.
Okay.
Yep.
So it is, I think, something that we want to continue to track that cohort as they're continuing to grow. But I think we also want to start putting in some baseline of, if we are looking at our kids now, before the sixth graders get to high school, what would be the baseline of our exit criteria, how are children performing on assessments, and are they really bilingual? Are they able to do two languages? And then it would be interesting to then compare that data to the sixth graders as you kind of track that cohort and as they move into high school.
Can I ask something on that? Kind of what Penny said, because I feel like we talked about this last year, the goals, because it says that we're making them globally dynamic in a complex, global society, and yet we don't have a language requirement. I remember, I feel like we talked about this last year.
We did.
So like, I'm definitely interested in this as well, and I know a bulk of our students do take language. Do we know, are high schools in our area, like, do most people require a language, or?
No, they, it's not required. The state does not require language.
Right. Like, do high schools in our area, do they?
No, generally, what, what high schools do is they set the criteria, sort of meet the state requirements, and then encourage above and beyond that, and students to do more than that. They have had, for at least the last six, eight years, they've had the high school reform document that started when McQuillan was the commissioner, actually, years ago, where they were looking for a world language requirement in all schools. They were looking for eight credits of STEM instead of math and science being separated, another eight in humanities, and sort of looking to change the credit distribution and the requirements for high schools. That was supposed to take effect for the graduating class of 2016. So they were in seventh grade at the time.
Yeah.
Now, I think it's a graduating class of 2024, because every year, it's been pushed out a little bit further, a little bit further for the, mostly because of the economic implications of it across the state and different, different places. And the fact that world language teachers are some of the most difficult to find. So the, but for us, again, as we look at our numbers, and it's one thing, it's an interesting sort of policy versus practice discussion. And I think as we look at updating this, it'll all come into play, where we have, again, the state minimum is two years of a science course. Over 100% of our students are enrolled in science every year, meaning that some double up on, on science. And 99.6% have four years, or three years, and, you know, it's well in excess of what those minimum requirements are. And the same goes with math. The same goes with even social studies. English is the only subject that the state requires four years. So we, those guidelines were set up with that as the approach. But I think that, as we look at it now, we, when we look at revising these, we want to discuss having the, the policy really more mirror the practice.
Yes.
So that all students are expected to achieve at the highest. And again, most do, but there are a couple that, that would, if those were the requirements, perhaps.
And I would just, I mean, I think this is a good thing to discuss.
Yeah.
And I would just add, though, because I know I've heard, although, like you said, 90% of our students go off to a four-year college, which requires, so they need to take it within their high school years. There are a few kids who do a different path. And I think what, having a little bit of flexibility in the requirements allows those not to, because if they're going to go, say, to perform arts, and they're going to be performing, and they're going to be the cello, the next cello player at Carnegie Hall, they might want to prefer to take other courses that would help them in that career path, where maybe a language course or another math class really is not going to do much for what, you know, because they're really, have a great focus and a, and a great aptitude, talent. So it just kind of gives those pair of people, because I've heard that argument.
But we have art credits. Like, we have, my kid, you know, like, my son's taking Latin as his elective.
Right. So it just, it gives flexibility.
But I think Latin and art is an elective. It just, it surprises me that we don't have, like, they have art requirements, and we have, you know, but we don't have.
Foreign language, yeah.
In high school, you know?
Yes. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think what this opens up is a greater conversation, too, with regards to scheduling. Because to your point, you know, I mean, I think the greater the flexibility we can build into the schedules, the kids are allowed to follow their individual interests. On the other hand, we want to make sure that they have the foundations that they need to move forward, but they're limited by their schedule. So, you know, I, I think once you become a parent of the high school, or you realize the limitations, you know, you kind of think they're going to go to high school and be able to take all these things, and you realize, well, it's only 24 hours in a day, and they only go to school five days a week. So it does become limiting. So I'm sure, I think that's something we've talked about over the years in terms of looking at the scheduling. I think that's something that you guys are all taking a look at at this point.
Absolutely. It's right here on C.
Right. Which will be really helpful, I think, and will really inform this conversation that we're having.
Is there anything you want to bring us up to date on the scheduling, or is it something we should wait and see how it works out?
Well, we, we've talked a bit about the six-day rotation, different things, you know, different grades. But I think that, you know, we spoke about it at length, that we- But I think that, you know, we spoke about it at length, that we really, we need to look, you know, K-12, and this is the, the time to look and see where we can improve that. So, I think we'll have quite a bit of information as the year goes on.
Sounds like a good go.
Absolutely.
As, as well as the others. Any other, keep going then. Oh, another question, Jean.
Maybe I missed it, but on four A, we have implement the X one initiative.
I don't think we got there yet.
We haven't got there yet.
We're on three. We're all three.
Well, we're going to get there pretty quick.
Yes.
And you'll be first, always.
So, looking at objective three is, this is a very exciting, we've made a lot of growth in this area in the past year, and I think it's, it's really pushing us to move forward. I think what's really interesting right now is when you start to look at the kind of the K-12 STEM framework, when you start to look at the ICT framework, when you start to look at next generation science standards, everything is really blending together. So, it is looking and saying, how do you integrate all of these disciplines together? And how are you looking at all of these frameworks to make sure that all children have these assured experiences, especially as they move into high school? That's another area that we need to continue to explore, because if you don't go the project lead the way, where do you pick up those engineering practices? So, those kinds of assured experiences should be coming through those science classes and math classes. So, that is something that we're continuing to explore. But we're really excited about the route that we're going K through eight. And it's kind of interesting, because it's almost taking kind of that FLESS shape to it, because these are the kids that are the next generation, who are really kind of driving some of what we're doing from a curriculum perspective. I mean, really taking on that computer science and that coding component for them is really pushing us, which will ultimately push us as we move into high school and what we're expecting kids in middle school to be doing as they're entering into high school. So, this is very exciting for us, and we're really looking forward to kind of blending these frameworks together and certainly implementing our, our K through eight program for next year. And certainly prepared to give updates in that regard.
Any questions on STEM? Yes. Penny?
So, when we talk in our goal number one, or certainly in, in one of our goals, I know we talked about, well, a objective number one, we talked about national and international standards and expectations. And science is one of those areas where you always see the United States compared with other countries. And yet, when we, in this goal and our objective, we monitor the alignment between new national and state frameworks in science, technology, engineering, math, and local STEM. And I'm just wondering if we, if there would be a way to insert the international component? I mean, if there are new international standards that we should be looking at as well?
And we do look at that through ISTI. So, that's the International Society for Technology and Education. So, when we're creating that ICT, so to add international in would be very appropriate.
Okay. I would suggest that then.
Any other questions?
Actually, more about just what you were talking about. Joe, when, when you were speaking, you mentioned a couple of the frameworks and stuff, besides the STEM, the ICE. Could you just go over that again? It just kind of went, because there's like so much all of a sudden, and I'm like, I lost. I lost you somewhere along.
So, that's really looking at our technology and library framework that we've developed. We talked, Rob Miller talked a little bit about that when he was doing the X to one and gave you a little bit of an example of where we were going with that framework. And when we were developing that framework was when we were looking at the International Society for Technology Education, which is the ISTI framework.
So, should we then not kind of even say STEM? I mean, because there's so many different groups?
Well, I think what Brian and I were very careful about when we were working on the wording was we were really trying to spell out STEM, to really say science, technology, engineering, and math. Because this next generation science standards has all that engineering practices embedded. We've got the technology, which is looking at the ICT and ISTI and all those frameworks. We've got the mathematical practices and all those standards. So, that's why we kept trying to spell out the word STEM, because it really is that science, technology, engineering, and math.
Yes. Penny?
So, in interviewing for my alma mater this past fall, it's always fun to see what students from other districts have taken. And there was a St. Luke student who I talked to, and she was great. She had gone through, and she had taken sort of the traditional, you know, biology, chemistry, physics, some, I'm not sure if they're all honors or not honors. And then she got to her senior year, and she was doing sort of a cool, really very STEM-like class. I don't know if it had some robotics or, or what. And I thought, you know, I didn't think that we had that opportunity, or I hadn't seen it for our students here. I mean, what I had understood is sort of you can get into the project lead the way path, and that's, you know, that's a great path, and that takes the students along. But if you have a student at the high school level who ends up doing sort of the more kind of really hot, whatever, the traditional biology, chemistry, physics, is there a way for half a year, senior year, or some sort of course, or should we look for something like that where they could take robotics? I don't know.
What we currently have...
Just throw it out there as something to think about.
And it's, it's a great thing to think about. It is. And what we currently have is the science research program, which is a co-taught class for students, where they are encouraged to kind of pursue their interests in science. They, they're often, they have internships where they can be working in different places or universities around Einstein, Yale, and other places, doing, doing research and then reporting out and sharing it with their classmates, things like. So, we have some ways to explore students who really want to pursue science, maybe in a non-traditional way. But that's something we're always talking about expanding. What more can we do? Can we? And I think robotics is, is an emerging field. We know that sort of the, the microprocessor, right, as we looked at, if you remember Tech Night, how many of those students sort of disassembled something and then built something totally new using the microprocessors and the different parts? So, this whole idea around makers' movements and...
Right.
Creation and, and, you know, curiosity, exploration, those things. So, sort of that, a lot of that happens with the, the kids in middle school, you know, they're naturally going that way. But so, how do we take that in the high school and sort of keep that energy alive as they go through? And I know our, our library meter center is looking at the learning commons model and doing some things where students could drop in and do that during free periods and things like that too. So, we're looking at it traditional ways and some non-traditional ways, and it's really, it's a great conversation for us to have, and we should keep having, figuring out.
And for me, I don't, I don't know, but for me, as, you get the humanities-oriented student, the political scientist, or whatever, the French, the language student, who still knows that they're in a techno, you know, an integrated technology environment, and so that they're not afraid of it. So, you know, you could do like a highly technical one for those students who are really good at it, but also just to have a sort of a fascinating, fun course, maybe elective or two course for students who want to explore it just a little bit, start to understand what that field is, even though if they're not going to major in it. I don't know. It just strikes me that there might be opportunities there.
We're at such an interesting time, because, and part of our conversation about STEM or not including STEM specifically like that, was about, it's, at some point, we'll get to a place where it's so embedded and so much a part of our experience and what we're doing, how kids learn, and what's going on in schools, that we, we won't need to delineate it out separately. It'll just be the way things are, like what they're doing and how they're studying. But we're not there yet. You know, we've got, got a ways to go to get to that level of integration and sort of alignments in all the things that we're doing. But that's, that's where we're heading. It's amazing. It's really an interesting time, a fun time.
Just, just to add a connection here, I know how, what a wonderful job our librarian here does with, working with the town, but also the town library has an extensive maker program and also as well as robotics and, and working on, it could be an alignment, especially in enrichment at summertime, if we're not already doing that with our summer school courses.
Yeah, and I was glad, I mean, I would echo the, the thought of, because there's so much going on with technology. And even with the people who are in technology, I don't think we're, it's a work in progress and we're getting towards, but there's so much place, and it's a hard, and I don't envy your job of doing this, because there's no space. I mean, there's just no more time. We're trying to put so much information in, you know, extra classes and stuff. And I know a lot of the robotics stuff are happening as club things afterwards for kids who are interested. But if there's ways that we can integrate somehow, as we look through, you know, how we update classes and stuff, that's, you know, fabulous. And I know we're also doing that with coding, because coding's a big issue, and they're trying to bring that in into the curriculum, which I applaud, you know, starting early on. But these are just trends that are happening that we need to kind of make sure that we're being on the forefront too.
And I think we're really expanding the VEX robotics at the middle school level and the offerings that we have for the students six through eight. And certainly even exploring those K through five opportunities. And they start in first grade with Lego robotics. So, it's, it's, they're learning how to build and, and create those machines that do simple functions. And we did offer a summer enrichment program that was well-attended, that Melinda Meyer did run. And it was a great combination of girls and boys that were in there creating robots, and they were rolling around the room, and, and very exciting, so.
Any more, any more questions on that?
Four is really moving into our whole X to one initiative. And certainly, it's continuing to update that district technology plan. It's, it's continuing to make sure that we implement that digital citizenship curriculum that we've talked about, five through nine. We have a lot of assured experiences K through four, but it is making sure that all of those experiences all children receive in grades five through nine. And then obviously, it's, it's continuing to pilot and expand those online opportunities. So, I know that there were a couple of questions on objective number four.
Yes, I had a simple question. We have A is basically the same from last year to this year. With Shen Parrot, did we?
I think we, did we add in ninth grade?
Four is A, is implement the X one initiative at the high school and... Yep, that's, that's in error, Jean. I'm sorry.
That is a mistake.
Yeah. Last year was a research phase?
We didn't do that last year.
No.
Glad to help.
Yes, last year, as you recall, we were doing our research as we looked at possible models and running, it was, really the goal was to pilot.
Well, I was looking at last year's tonight and saying, hey, we're going to, we're going to develop the, we're going to continue to complete the study and develop action plans, and we're going to implement it at the same time. And that's what got me going on it, and I looked at, we're doing it this year again.
Yep.
Right. Yeah, last year, RED is complete study and develop action plans regarding next generation implementation of X to one.
One was in error.
Yes. So...
But you guys got it right this year. Good.
Five is really two, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Go ahead. You go. Go ahead. All right. So, you had talked about K through four, and I'm talking about four C here, which is the digital citizenship curriculum. So, do we have one that's K through four, or are we just ultimately going to have a specific curriculum?
We already have one in existence. So, it starts in...
We have a K through four?
Yeah. So, it starts in grade two, and it goes two through four. I mean, not that it's, there's some very basic skills that are introduced in K and one, but it really begins in grade two. So, it's already in place, two through four. So, it would be a matter of looking back and tweaking and adjusting if necessary. And then there is one that exists five through eight, but there's not consistency, and that was where we were talking about that workshop model and having children be able to cycle through at least one quarter of digital citizenship, another quarter of health, another quarter of STEM, another quarter of that digital literacy. And so, that was going to give us those assured experiences that all children were meeting those expectations.
All right. So, I guess my...
On that, before you go, so, so does that mean that by ninth, we expect them to have enough information, or are we going to look then the next year to do nine through twelve?
Well, with ninth grade, we wanted to make sure that we were having certain lessons that all children were exposed to before they went into their X to one device in January. So, there are some lessons already in existence that are part of that health curriculum in ninth grade. We were just updating those and adjusting those and making sure that those were going to be in, you know, in before all students were bringing in their devices in January. We'll be in a different scenario next year, because we'll have had our exposure to all of our eighth graders before they enter into high school. But those units would still remain within the health, but they would probably be more a spiraling and an extension of what they've done.
So, good.
Well, so, I'm, I, having recently been on a train with a one-year-old who was fast working on the iPad, I just wonder, why are we, wouldn't there be things that we would want to be, knowing that the students were on these devices probably at home? Would there be a few things that we, wouldn't we want to eventually have a K through twelve digital citizen curriculum? Maybe not. But K through twelve, and maybe there's not that much we teach at K or one, but if we think about our student and the fact that they're using these devices before they get to kindergarten?
And, and it's there, but it's, it's, it's so basic, you know? It's, once again, it's the address, it's making sure that your parents are aware that you're on. I mean, there's so many other basic things that you're doing as part of just that computer drop-off program that they have, K and one. So, in addition to teaching those skills of how do you use a mouse, it's also teaching them, you know, to be in safe sites and that you're always, you know, asking your parents for which apps that you're going into. It's, it's more basic than what you're really hitting when you have kids that are out there possibly now gaming. I mean, that's a big thing, that kids are out there gaming and communicating with people. That's part of what they do. But certainly, I can go back, I can give you examples of what we do in K and one, my, my, you know, I'm just not thinking of them quick enough right now, but I can give them to...
That sounds completely appropriate. I'm just, it, it sounds like the right level. I mean, to me, it's sort of like you want these students to be putting their seatbelts on.
Right.
And, you know, I know that got ingrained into me before I was in kindergarten.
Right.
So, I do it now between my mailbox and my garage, which is the delight of my family. But I don't know, I just, maybe, I just wonder if at some point we want to, or just think about whether or not it may make sense to formalize it.
Questions also?
Diana? I, I just want to make sure I, I understand. So, for the ten through twelve, or the nine through twelve currently, their digital citizenship experience really is, is the inconsistent fifth through eight, and sort of that's sort of how they're going to have to sort of graduate at this point.
Right. I mean, you have to remember, there's always things that are going to be taught within research. So, we never lose sight of it. I'm just saying, the formal digital citizenship curriculum. But when they come back and they're doing their research in tenth grade, are they hitting that ball again? Of course they are. Anytime they're, they're hitting in those research pieces, they're always going back to all of that.
Okay. Because I just, I mean, I have...
But it's more, I'm just saying it's more integrated versus it's actually something that a child is sitting through and, and going through the course. When you're starting to hit that ten through twelve, it's more integrated.
Okay. And I just, I guess, I would just want to make sure, and I'm sure you do a lot of research, but, you know, sort of that last segment of the population, while we'll have had them along the way.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I, I really want to make sure that that, that last group is not forgotten, because it, they're at the, probably the most risky part.
And they did have exposure to it in ninth grade as part of their health curriculum, and they continue to be exposed to it, but you're, I see what you're saying now, it's going back and looking at just this year, and making sure the tenth.
Yes, as we look at it, we'll, um, we'll keep an eye to, at what ages, what grades is it appropriate for the explicit instruction, you know, and that's probably middle school, we look at the elementary a bit, and the sort of, when can you, when do you really just sort of drill into explicitly, this is how we do this, this is how we do that, versus, as Dr. Karanti mentioned, embedded in as you're doing research, as you're doing these other things, so in some ways, you know, it's similar again to what we mentioned about STEM a bit, and it's sort of, that level of integration, certainly the high school, you know, to sit and, um, do a lesson on digital citizenship may not be as effective as embedding it in a lesson around appropriate research or whatever it might be. We'll take a look at that.
Any other questions on that?
Oh, thank you.
Allison, um, I don't even know if this would be appropriate or make sense or not, but I know we used to, and I'm assuming we probably still do, for our athletes, we ask them to sign a behavioral contract, basically they're gonna participate, that these are the expectations, I'm just wondering if it would make sense for us to think about perhaps doing some kind of a digital contract, behavioral contract, uh, for two reasons, one is sometimes we have a visual like that, it's very clear, everybody has the same understanding what the expectations are, and I think it's also a helpful tool for the parents, because then it's kind of collaboration between the school and the parents in terms of what expectations are, and I'm sure most, hopefully, families have higher, even higher expectations, um, but for those who are new, uh, to the game, it might be helpful to, to, to kind of set some rules, you know, for them to set rules at home if they see what the expectations are in school, so just a thought.
Moving into objective five, that's really, uh, response to intervention, so these look pretty similar to last year, if not exactly the same, but it is something that, um, we need to pay close attention to, that we're always making sure that all students achieve, and that if there are children that are having difficulties academically, socially, or emotionally, that we respond to them and we differentiate our instruction, we create action plans, and that we have a specific process that we need to follow.
Any questions, any questions that anyone has on that? Or elaboration?
I ta-talked briefly already about, um, objective number six, but that's really, um, I think what's really exciting is really taking a look at, uh, C is really trying to figure out, how can we start to do some, uh, testing, um, when children are exiting out, so if it is that junior year, when they've decided that they're no longer gonna move into languages, is there some way that we can do some type of exit test to really measure, um, their success?
And one thing, I, I just wanna mention with our foreign language that I've just, uh, just anecdotally, what I've noticed is that, um, many of the kids are much better writers and readers than speakers, so I don't know if there's some things that we need to adjust to kind of get more of that speaking, cause it's a tough thing, and it's just, you know, so it's, just to really be proficient in it, um, and I don't know what, if we're coming up with a measurement of if we integrate that too.
And it will be interesting to watch our cohort of sixth graders, because so much of what they do in the elementary schools is speaking, um, and we've actually had to increase the amount of writing to challenge some of the kids, um, that we're requiring of some of our third and fourth graders, but so much of it is the speaking piece of it.
That was even something that was just, uh, discussed in our SACS, one of our SACS meetings, because there is a, uh, school, um, district in the area, they have a whole curriculum of speaking skills, and, uh, I understand what you're, you're thinking probably the same thing as we talked about it. Yes.
So I had a question about six B, um, where we're looking to expand opportunities to continue world language for students who have completed a traditional sequence of courses, and then explore offering content courses, um, that require use of the second language, I know we've talked about that before, so when I look at that, it looks to me like that's the type of thing we're, we're looking at for maybe juniors or seniors or real high school students, and what I'm wondering about, and I have no idea if you could do it, but why couldn't we do that in fifth grade, or do that in sixth grade, if we had really great language students, and say, all right, this team is gonna be the Spanish team, so if you want your child to have Spanish all day long, you know, in for whatever subject we thought was best, they could opt in to that team, and I know that, that could present all types of issues, but it just struck me, it might be an interesting pilot.
And we'll get, uh, Lizette D'Amico on that immediately. No, I do, it's very interesting though, I mean, and so much of what they learn in K five is through content, um, that is really where they pick up their FLEX.
And that was the great thing about FLEX, is you're teaching content, so then we sort of give up that whole angle until you get back to maybe eleventh or twelfth grade.
I mean, but if you think too, like, when I took, when you take language, like, you know, you don't, you won't come proficient into, into it until you actually go there, like, for me, like, taking language for all through high school, all through college, and then I went there, and then I actually started speaking it, but it's hard unless you have like a dialect back and forth, right, I mean, then there's, my daughter's in Spanish, and she's been in it, like, forever, and then we go somewhere and she can't say it, like, you know, I mean, it just depends on interest levels and, you know.
I know, but then you go to Europe, and everybody speaks like four or five, you know, they speak four or five languages, I keep thinking, we're just as smart, why aren't we, our kids are just as capable. We're not getting to practice. It could just be that.
That is one of the things that, that, in Finland, for instance, you can go to a Swedish school, you can go to a Finnish school, you can go to, you know, you, you can choose the school, the language in the school that you would like to go to, if you'd like to go to Swedish school, everything will be taught in Swedish, in Finland, so, and that's, so the, the instruction is in a different language, interesting.
Anyhow.
Yeah, that, that might be something too, like, if you're talking about enrichment or something, of doing conversation classes, and they have those all the time in colleges, whatever, so your kids can get a summer of Spanish or French or whatever, and really immerse themselves.
Give me a new club.
Which might be more doable in the budget.
All right, we're clearly in the mode of creating more work for the administration tonight, so.
That's it for our goal.
You're sorry you asked, aren't you, yeah, actually, I just wanna say one quick thing, but this is a, a small idea, relative to Penny's, this is very small, um, but actually it ties into what Jen, Jen was a perfect segue, um, which I was wondering if it would make sense for us to at some point bring in some of our college students to come in and speak to, um, some of our younger students, either middle school, or some of those ninth and tenth, who are maybe about to give up a language, who are frustrated, you know, I, I look at learning languages, at least for my own family, for my own children, I saw it was almost like, um, you know, arts, the arts or science, they're wired a certain way, and I had children who could just pick up languages and nothing, and I had a daughter who studied years and years, and I think she could say, you know, see and hola, so, you know, that, it just wasn't her thing, you know, so, but I think what was really, what would be really helpful for some of the kids who are discouraged and find it very frustrating, is if they hear the experiences of some of the kids who've gone abroad, and to really understand what the options and opportunities are in college to study abroad, it might motivate some of the kids who are thinking, why am I, why am I bothering, what am I gonna do with this, um, and I think the kids really sell, you know, those college kids can really sell the programs they've been on, and the opportunities are endless right now for these kids, so just, just a thought to, uh, something we might look at in the future, we bring the kids back in December, I know, and they talk to the juniors, the seniors do, uh, or the freshmen, the college freshmen talk to the, uh, seniors and juniors, so just another, another thought.
It would also be interesting to track, um, the sixth graders who continue in Spanish, and to see how proficient they are by eighth grade.
Yeah.
So, you know, especially cause those are the kids who are now entering sixth grade, who've had it since kindergarten, so. Moving on to goal number two, uh, to improve achievement, service, and relationships through communication that is responsive, clear, timely, and inclusive, um, and so really it's, you know, developing and implementing that comprehensive district communication plan that incorporates feedback about communication, um, from the community, um, provide professional learning for board of ed members and administrators regarding how to lead in an age of digital, social networking and digital media, I think it's something that is just ongoing and, and something that we need to continue to keep doing, um, and integrate the features and capacity available in the new website to improve communication with all stakeholders for a variety of purposes, um, I think Dr. Miller at one point had talked about, how do you establish those dashboards, and how do you get it to be something that's really geared towards you, so how can we do, um, some of those parent workshops that, and for other stakeholders as well, to help really use it to the fullest.
And as, as we look at this, at goal two, it really is an iterative, iterative goal, right, where, uh, now that we have the pieces in place, we, with the use of Blackboard Connect, with the new website, with other communication features, now that we have these pieces out there, we wanna make sure, we wanna develop and implement a comprehensive communications plan, that, um, you know, hits K twelve, all stakeholders, and takes us through the twelve months, and that the communications committee has been working hard and doing a great job with all of this, and now to sort of codify it a bit and get into, um, into a plan that will do that for us, um, of course, we're always looking for professional learning in an age of social networking and digital media, because that age is always changing, right, as the, the media changes and things continue to, to adapt, we have to adapt with it, so, um, looking to do some more work with that, the, I think the, uh, the great work of putting the website in place lays the foundation for it now, but now there are so many features available, that we've already started with school wires and scheduled some time for them to come in, uh, and to show us sort of what that, what the next steps are, as far as communication to students, to parents, and to the community, we've been using it, I think, relatively well for our communications with the community as a, you know, sort of a news outlet, next step is to drill down a bit and use it for the, um, for the work that's going on in the classrooms for students and homework and communication in the classes, so this is a year we're going to be learning to do that. It shows you that goal one truly is the heart of our work. It's great.
Uh, goal three, uh, is very similar to last year, promote and support innovative and exemplary research-based professional practices in order to continuously enhance teaching and extend learning, um, that really is going into our teacher evaluation and professional learning, and our leader evaluation and professional learning plans, um, and it really is, um, something that we have to continue to have a committee, um, that we continue have to submit our plan to the state of Connecticut, uh, we were just recently approved for another year of a waiver, um, by the commissioner, so we're excited to continue, um, our work, they've asked that we'll probably be completing a report for the state, because they're curious about our plan, and the professional growth piece of our plan, and how we've been implementing it, and the effectiveness of that, um, but I think really it is that ongoing work of the calibration, I think as teachers are moving into really understanding that effective teaching framework and the common language of it, we've really seen instruction practices growing, um, within classrooms, and for them to pinpoint particular areas that they would like to work on, whether it be feedback or questioning, has been very helpful to them, um, in improving their instructional practices, so, um, I think we're at a point where people are really starting to feel comfortable with our plan and, and the ongoing calibration, certainly as administrators, we have to do fifteen hours per year in supervision and evaluation that talk about our calibration and how we're calibrated across the district, um, so we do that internally because we're working with our framework, um, so that's just part of our practice and our professional development as well.
I have a question as to, um, have you been given any indication of how many years we're gonna have to file for a waiver before?
It will probably be annual, because we do, we do not accept the C model, and that we've developed our own plan, so, um, until they do away with that mandate, every year we will report, um, how we are doing toward our plan, any adjustments that we're making to our plan, and, um, applying for the waiver, so it's, it's constant, I think what they're trying to do is keeping these documents alive, and living documents, and, and they want everybody to have them on the forefront, um, it's not just put something on your shelf and go into a cycle evaluation, or forgetting to evaluate staff members, which has never happened here, it's always been on the forefront of what we do, but I cannot imagine it's gonna go away.
No, and, and interestingly, along with our, uh, letter of acceptance this year, we also included a request for us to share feedback with them about our model and our continuum, and to sort of share with them our results, in a way, so I think the state is looking to continually learn from districts like ours, who we, we've developed our own plan, we believe in it, it's a solid, it's working very well, I think they're using that to help inform their work as they continue to try to improve on, on the state plan. The other exciting thing around the teacher evaluation this year is the, uh, combining or the work with a professional learning team as well, where it was a teacher evaluation team, and now that it, where, as it matures, we, we're building more and more into the professional learning component of this, as the committee meets and talks about, uh, the teacher evaluation continuum and the, the indicators and objectives they're in, but also, what, how do we couple the training with what we're seeing in order to continually improve capacity across the district, so, I think that's an exciting development going into next year.
Anybody have any questions about that? Dr. Karanti?
Okay, moving into goal number four, that's to promote an environment that fosters respect, ethical behavior, and responsible global citizenship, um, so within this, um, you will see our continued work with our, um, social, academic, and personal framework, um, and that's really to, to guide our work from a responsive teaching perspective and making sure that we're hitting all of those needs of those students, and what's exciting at this time of the year is we're starting to identify where is that integration of all of those skills, you know, some of that's gonna lie within those digital, digital citizenship curriculum, um, some of that will lie within even as we look and talk about the health curriculum, where is all of this part of, some of that also is part of the mentoring advisory program that we do at the high school, um, so it really is that whole integration piece, um, and then I think most of, uh, B and C are, are similar to what was in the past, um, D is really taking a look at that K twelve health curriculum, um, it's having those ongoing conversations and, and really researching, um, the continuum, certainly when we adjusted the ninth grade, that forced us to even look at that curriculum and saying, how can we adjust, um, what's being taught, because of the scheduling and how we've adjusted that, um, but then it is going back and saying, where, where is that alignment, it's also, now that we're doing that workshop model in middle school, and one of those quarters is all gonna be health, so it's looking to say, are we, are we meeting all those expectations, so I think this is a year of, of research and reviewing of our health curriculum, um, those of you that have been on the board will remember probably many years ago, there used to be, uh, like a health teacher that would go to the elementary schools and would rotate around and teach health lessons, and then as the PE teachers were duly certified to teach health and phys ed, some of that responsibility got shifted over to PE, but I think it is then taking that broad perspective and saying, where is it all integrated, because it's also general education teachers' responsibility, PE teachers, um, so it's really looking at the whole curriculum, and we would obviously continue to provide updates in that regard. And then I think really looking at, at E was really bringing in, um, so much of what you saw in the spring presentation, um, from Darlene Pianca and Nora Daley was really bringing in that student voice and that ownership piece, and continuing the great work that has occurred, um, at, you know, certainly at the middle school with, with swag and what they've all shared with you, and, and moving into the high school as well.
So I think this is fantastic, and I, I thought the presentation showing the student initiative at SACS was just fabulous, uh, I guess the, I mean, you all are experts in this, the two areas that hit me on the health curriculum, uh, where I'm really glad that we're looking at it, are one, um, just everything that we do on the drug scale, um, and I don't know how we do as a community compared to our peer groups, um, if there's any way to measure that, uh, if there are any best, more best practices that we can do, uh, to steer our students in the right direction, the more we can do, the better, and, um, just I did, I mentioned to Jill, but there was, I don't know if anybody else saw the letter to the advertiser about our health curriculum, that was in, I think it was this week's advertiser, it's a letter from a student, um, who graduated, I think, in oh-six, and what she was, uh, doing was questioning whether or not it was, uh, well, she didn't think that the abstinence only policy, teaching that all the way through twelfth grade was the most helpful policy that we've had, now, we're always research-based, so, if you're looking into that again, um, I've always, I think that that would be an area for, uh, we could mine.
There's also, I think, a, um, a group of parents that are very interested in having something to help, particularly seniors as they're leaving to go to college, to be able to handle, uh, what's called a date rate situation, and I think that's another one that they wanted to have help on, uh, certainly it's, uh, it might be something that not all parents want, but it's certainly we can be discussing and, uh, have it as an elective of some sort if necessary. Yes, Jean?
On, um, one B continues to provide professional learning opportunity for the school, climate coordinator specialists in school teams, does the specialist in school teams, is that really climate specialist and climate school teams, or what do specialists in school teams refer to?
Well, the specialist would be, um, anything from the mental health provider, so it could be guidance counselors, psychologists, social workers, um, the school teams are also, um, those school climate teams that we have that are also school safety teams, so that in some schools they serve as a dual purpose, but it's making sure all of them are well-educated as well, um, and then certainly, I think if, as we've learned with our work this year, it's even expanding, um, those specialists off into our, our core academic teachers, because many of them are, are doing some of those advisory lessons as well, so it's giving that professional learning and those opportunities as much as possible.
I just wanted to add it to what Hazel was mentioning, that, you know, with the parents with safety, um, just remembering something that, you know, when we had the seniors come in last year with December, and one of the things that they had mentioned of what they would like, but I think, again, as before you go off to college, they're just saying with the social situations, um, the, the social activities that they do and getting involved in it too much, that they just were not, I think, as well-versed about, you know, how to self-monitor or, or discipline, because it is an open game and it, and even, you kind of get carried away, and, and there's no one watching you or anything else, so they said they would, they would love to have more on some of that, so, if we can look at that being added to our health curriculum.
Yes, Penny?
Just, and on, and on that, one, I think, some of the things I've read, some of the most successful programs at colleges are these buddy systems, and I know that that is a concept that didn't really exist, uh, when I went, I, I never went to a party with a buddy at college, and I think it's, it's been very successful, um, this generation is so good, uh, about having designated drivers, um, for dealing with, uh, drinking, uh, at the college, not the high school, the college level, um, but I think maybe if we instituted the concept of a buddy system, uh, that, that might, I don't know what it could be, but that would be, it might be something that we could look into, uh, talking about with our exiting, with our high school and our, uh, you know, junior and seniors.
Any other things that anyone wants to add to that, yes, Allison?
Um, I think goal number four is incredibly important, um, as the world becomes so much more complicated for our, for our kids, basically, but I just wanna encourage the administration as they look at the health curriculum specifically, um, to really make a concerted effort that the updates that we do, um, really reflect the realities, uh, of our children's lives, I know sometimes we walk a very fine line, um, I know Hazel, what you were just saying, some parents want something, some parents don't want something, um, but our children, our students' reality is, is their, is their reality, and they're gonna go out into it, they're in sixth grade, ninth grade, twelfth grade, when they're in college, and we talk about, in terms of our technology curriculum, you know, trying to keep up with the changes, and I think I look the same way at this sample curriculum, trying to keep up And I think I look the same way at this Sappel curriculum, trying to keep up with the changes because it is changing so quickly for them. And I feel they're so ill-prepared so often to go and, you know, to move forward. And there are two pieces to it. One is while we have them here as students and the other is when they go off to college. And I really wish there was something, and I know I've spoken to people about this before, and I'm not sure where the responsibility lies, but I think it's really important that real honest conversations are had about the college environment and college life before kids get into it, and not only for the students but also for the parents. I think parents are as, if not more, unprepared for college life than their children are. So I don't know what we can do as a school system or if we need to do as a community. I'm not sure where the responsibility lies, but I think it's really, really important that we start having these discussions. We've had multiple tragedies in our own town, there are tragedies in all the towns surrounding us, and if we can just prevent one or two of these things from happening, it'll be well worthwhile. So I would be happy to get involved in it, but I just, you know, I don't know, and I'd be happy to sit down with some and talk about and another board of ed members to brainstorm also where we think our responsibility lies. But I think we are, we would be remiss if we did not begin to address what's going on with our kids.
There is a town coalition that's very interested in this discussion, and I think they might be another group to sort of get together with and work on. Yes.
Yes, I guess on one hand, I agree with you, Allison. I think, you know, there are lots of things out there that many kids are ill-prepared for. But at the same time, there is a very fine line that we walk as schools and educators and, sort of, where we fit in with parents' rights. And so I think we have to be careful, and I think what you're saying about a community coalition type of thing is a great thing to look at. But I also think that we have to be very extremely respectful of parents' rights in this, in this area in particular, because I think we all have a vision of what we think is right, and everybody's vision is slightly different, and I think we need to be very careful in this area.
Yes, Penny.
I think Diana's point is really key, and what I would really want to say is, I think we have to be upfront about what we teach and what we don't teach. So if we're not going to teach sex education, we're not going to talk about how to prevent pregnancies and all that stuff, or we're not going to talk about date rate, then that's fine. I mean, I'm not saying that this community should talk about it, but I think that the parents who think, believe that their children are getting that type of education, because to them, they got it in their high schools, and just it occurred to them that New Canaan doesn't teach those things, I think we just need to be upfront and say, this is what we teach and this is what we don't teach, so that then you as a parent, I mean, we could just post it on the website, you would know, and you could fill in as you think it's necessary. I, because I'm very respectful of parents' rights, and I think you raise a good point. But I think sometimes we're not giving parents the rights when they don't know what is and isn't being taught.
And I think that's a great way where we could collaborate, like with these coalitions where, because I think it's good to have the school's perspective of, you know, proper education or whatever that would help. So they could be alternate means where parents could tap in if they would like to provide that information. It's not going to be done at school because it's not necessarily our responsibility, but that there's a well-qualified place you can go if you'd like to provide that, if you're not comfortable doing yourself or you have, because a lot of parents just don't even know what's going on. I mean, they don't know the new terms, what might be out there, that Molly's not a girlfriend's name, or that that's actually something you don't want your kids to be doing. So there's just a lot of information that, and if they have that opportunity, working with maybe perhaps not through our education program, but to say like, this is available, it's done through something we know that's reputable, that if your child chooses as your family, you want to do that, I think it's a great way to collaborate.
Yes, Jane.
I'll agree with a couple of people in various ways here. I agree with Penny that whatever we teach or do not teach, it should be clear. Right now, I think though, that, not that the parents are assuming that they're being taught certain things, I think they're assuming that, well, like, I don't think, they have a hard time finding out in this area what is being taught. I've had a number of cases where people have asked me, and I myself, I tried to find out what the curriculum is, and it's been challenging for various reasons, which is not worth going into right here tonight. I also agree with Diana that this is a sensitive area. I certainly don't have a problem with talking about what college is about and what you might expect there. I don't think that's, well, that could be sensitive but not as sensitive. I guess it's teaching what you do about these situations might be a little bit more sensitive. Certain people might have certain attitudes than others. And how you do that, the coalition idea with groups which are not part of our system but which you work with to see that children get and parents get access to information that would be, that they deem appropriate, would be a very good way to allow parental involvement in what the children are learning.
And choice.
And not taking it away from the parent-child relationship.
Because the one thing we know for sure is that your kids, at least my boys, are not telling you the truth about what they're learning and not learning. And you only find out years later.
With that, you take away from it.
So we're looking forward to a good year of research and review, and certainly transparency is very critical.
And we're just scratching the surface on this discussion. You know, reviewing a health curriculum, reviewing and revising it is something that you do with various stakeholders and you take your time. And Penny, you said it in the very beginning, right? We are research-based in the work that we do. So we look at best practices, we see what works, and we adjust so that we are timely and relevant to the students of today. And that's, it does take time, but we do it once and we'll do it right.
Exciting.
And moving right along, certainly, goal number five is to promote and practice good stewardship for all district resources in a manner that supports safe and healthy environments and optimizes student learning. So I think this is really, you know, talking about streamlining the budget process, this is really talking about making sure that we continue to keep our enrollment and capacity committee moving forward and updating that and presenting those long-range plans. It's really those periodic reports about, you know, the South Window Project and the Saks Auditorium. All of that really fits within here. It's identifying those efficiencies and effective cost savings, you know, that's really being good stewards.
I think this is an important goal to have here because it certainly takes a great deal of our time and to make sure we're putting on there to be assessing and to make sure we're covering all the bases on, I think is a good idea. I had one thing I just wanted to say about the total goals, if I could. I think it is a wonderful characteristic of New Canaan that we keep the goals rotating through and looking at each step so that we really make, do a precise job of having them happen and accomplishing them. There are too many places and we have all seen places like this that just rush through everything and say it's all complete in one year. Well, it isn't all complete if you're doing a really thorough job. And I think that's something that to be really respected in New Canaan, that we don't rush through it, we have all the steps, and they're incremental changes, but they're important changes, and they certainly have to do with evaluation and evaluation of data, and that makes a big difference on making the accomplishment happen. So, thank you. Jane?
I have an important adjustment for goal five on point three B. The "and" should be "and."
Yes, it should. And identify.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Are there any other suggestions or questions about number five?
Yes, Allison. Just a quick question, just clarification. As we refer to the five-year capital project look ahead, which I think ties back to the facilities survey we did?
Yes.
Don't we also have a 10-year and a, do we have a longer term?
We do, we do go longer term. Yep, as, of course, as the years go out, there's more change year by year. So we're thinking, you know, five years far as, and we're happy to share everything, you know, as we go through it all. But five-year helps us, I think, for the planning now. 10-year gives you, gives you a glimpse and things, but things do change, you know, as the further goes out.
You're more comfortable with the five-year in terms of realistically.
Well, yeah, we can say with some pretty good reliability that the five-year, three years from now, we're still going to need that roof on the building and things, but if we look seven years out, things can change a bit. But we have it all. You know, we do five, we do 10, and we even look at it in longer range than that. So it can all be in there. Yeah, happy to share.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Penny.
So this is a little bit in the weeds, but I'm just wondering on goal five, two, where we're looking at the five-year capital project look ahead, is do we include in that or is there a best practice for however many years you should do another facilities review and put that capital money into the plan? In other words, we just did it, it was fabulous, we found everything. Rather than kind of wait for a board of ed a few years from now to say, oh, we should do it again, should we kind of pop that in six years out, seven years out, five years? I mean, what's, what would be the time to, you know, because I know it took us, we had to ask the town bodies for that money for several years before we got it, and then they were really thrilled that, you know, we, they awarded it and we did the study. So I think that we're on a good place, and I've had a number of people on the town bodies say, you know, make sure you know what's coming down the pipe.
I think we'll look into that. It's a great suggestion, great idea, that in the capital plan, whether it's five years, seven years, 10 years, there's a placeholder to do another capital survey. So to inform the plan. So I don't know what the best practice is, how many years, but I will.
I think the architect or other groups would probably have some idea of that. In other words, they have some idea of how rapidly systems expire, what types of systems and things of that nature. And some expert like that would say it's kind of this often.
Yep.
That's a good point.
Yeah, we'll go right, we'll go back to them and ask, we'll put it right into the capital plan starting this year. It's a great idea.
I think I'm finished.
Terrific overview for us, saying people's career, taking us through step by step.
And the last two words in all of the goals are student learning. And I do think that the fact that we just spent probably 65, 75% of our time talking about goal one, which was all focused on student learning and preparation, curriculum, instruct, I think that really speaks volumes to the values of the boards. Thank you for that.
Any other things? Okay, moving, we have this already up as a first read, and then we'll be coming back at it as a second read, final read in a future meeting. We now have another action item, and that would be to move to approve the Dr. Lissy's superintendent of schools and Dr. Joanne Keating, director of finance and operations, has authorized signatories for contracts in 2015, '16 school year. Would you want to explain just in case anybody doesn't understand?
Sure, it's an annual notification, an annual vote to authorize Joanne and me, the superintendent and the DFO, just as contracts come through and as we're spending money, we go through and do that.
Okay, do we need, yes?
A move to authorize Dr. Lissy and Dr. Keating to active signatories for contracts.
Second, Jane, second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands, and that's unanimous with everyone here. Looking down at the next is our consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. Can I have a motion about the consent agenda? Allison?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you. Second, Sangita. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by raising your hands. That's unanimous with the group. Now announcements in future meetings.
Sure, yes, we will, our next meeting will be August 17. At that time, we will do another enrollment update as we, as school will be right around the corner. We'll have our numbers certainly closer to start. We'll have our second read of the district goals, so between now and then, other thoughts or ideas or suggestions, you know, send them to, send them directly to me, and Jill and I will continue to work on them. What we'll do at the end of each week between now and then is if there are changes, I'll send them each Friday so that you can see where things are as we continue to work on those. And Joanne will be back for her statement of accounts. Mr. Egan will give us an athletics report, which will do a year in review a bit about the 14, '15 school year, and then looking forward, and we'll be answering some of the questions that have come up. And of course, we've had lots of things going on in our buildings this summer, South Saks especially, and so we'll be giving a capital update around some of what's happening, where we are, and hopefully it'll be all good news. And according to reports, as we look at things now and how we're doing, we are on schedule at each of the places, so that's very important. So we'll be going through the capital information, and then, believe it or not, just a week or so later, our students are back and school's in session. So it's been a busy summer, a great summer so far, and we're getting a lot done in preparation.
Very, very busy. Any questions about announcements or about meetings upcoming? In that case, yes, Diana?
A move to adjourn.
Is there a second on that, please? Yes, Sangita, all those in favor, that's unanimous. Thank you all very much for a good meeting.